I'd like to call the Village Board.
Conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Roll call, please, Patrick.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Here.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Melcheski.
Here.
President Kardasky.
Here.
And trustee Zerbal is excused for the evening.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women in uniform throughout the world. I would like to read a statement from our IT department. For tonight's meeting, we have gone ahead and muted everyone's microphone who is attending virtually to prevent unnecessary crosstalk and interference. If you would like to speak on a specific agenda item, please use that chat bubble located in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. State your name and what agenda item you would like to speak on. When the board gets to that agenda item and decides to open the floor to the public, we will call on you individually to speak. You may have to unmute your microphone at that time. Thank you for your patience. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to move 10i up before 10b. With that change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Action on open and closed minutes from April 28th and May 7th, the regular meeting on April 28th. Action on those minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the special meeting board minutes for May 7th, 2020. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state name and address, limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Would anybody like to speak on items not on the agenda? Any items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements. I have an email that I'll just share what it says, but I'm going to do it when we do the 10i because it's about the cosponsored, so I will do it then. Okay, number eight, action on the consent agenda. 8a, action on operator's license. 8b, action on operator license renewals. 8c, investment report. 8d, budgeted expenditures. 8e, department reports.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, public hearing. Public hearing regarding ordinance number 05-1-20, adding a shelter facility zoning definition and addition of shelter facility as a conditional use to the zoning table of allowable uses. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak to this item?
Do you want to have Erin give a synopsis of this so that everybody knows what we're talking about?
Right, okay.
As noted in the staff report, village staff has been approached by a shelter facility about various property within the village. Our current code does not list a shelter facility anywhere in the definitions or list of permitted uses. This creates kind of a gray area for staff as we review this potential option for this use. We do have a transitional facility definition and locations. However, we do not have a homeless shelter facility in the code. The proposed definition would be a temporary place of lodging for homeless individuals or homeless families. A shelter facility may be considered a transitional facility as regulated within this code. So the proposed amendment would identify a shelter facility as a conditional use within the R3 multifamily residence, I1 light industry, and I2 heavy industry zoning districts, which is the same as the currently defined transitional facilities.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak for this change? Anybody who'd like to speak against it? Anybody who'd like to speak against it?
Move to return to regular order of business?
Second.
Motion and a second to return to regular order of business? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action items, 10a, action regarding ordinance number 05-1-20, adding a shelter facility zoning definition and addition of shelter facility as a conditional use to the zoning table of allowable uses. Erin just explained it all in the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions?
Erin, a question. Do we have to have that in our ordinance?
By not having it in the ordinance, it does create a gray area for staff because there are other definitions in the code which could be transitional facility, which could be construed homeless facility. This creates a clear definition as far as what a homeless facility is in the ordinance as opposed to not being listed. Now, by it not being listed, any item not listed is not allowed anywhere in the village. Okay? So that's the difference between putting it in the code, clearly identifying where it could be located, and not having it in the code.
Erin, I got a question too. Go ahead, do you want to finish up?
That was brought to the planning board if I'm correct.
That's correct.
We did do that, alright. I believe I remembered how I voted. Okay, thank you.
My question is, because I'm not on the plan board, is I... We're going across three different categories as far as R3, light industry and heavy industry. To put residential in there, that seems a little bit broad. I don't know if we want a homeless shelter in heavy industrial area.
It's not likely to occur there, but that is consistent with the transitional facility, which is currently defined and listed in those zoning classifications. So I want to maintain consistency between those two uses.
So if we don't recommend having them in heavy industrial areas, why have it there?
You certainly can take it out. Again, I'm looking for consistency between the two uses.
I think a better use is to take the other one, take it out of...off of there as well. I mean, because we don't want transitional housing in a heavy industrial area anyways.
To do that, we'd have to go through a separate amendment process?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's... I guess that's my feeling on it. Why do we want residential in a heavy industrial area?
You're saying eliminate it, Mark.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that neither.
Eliminated in the I2 and I1? Is that what you're saying?
Well, heavy industrial for sure. I don't know where we got light industrial that would fit the need of a homeless shelter.
Right, I agree. I'm just trying...I1 and I2 are the two industrial zones, right?
Correct. They're two of the four industrial zones, correct.
Okay. I got you.
So the one we have on Spirit, what zoning is that?
That, I have to think.
I want to say it's family services, but I'm not sure I remember that right.
It actually might be business park. See, they're business park or light industry.
You want to make sure first before we...
Right.
I don't have a problem with the definitions being equal myself. I think they should be equal too, Mike. I just don't think we should have transitional or homeless in a heavy industrial area. That's my only point. I understand your point.
You used the term heavy industrial. Is that the I1 and I2? Are those the heavy industrial zones?
Yes.
No. I'm sorry, we had a sidebar there. Pardon?
I just asked, Mark, if I1 and I2, he uses the term heavy industrial. That's one and two?
I2 is heavy industry. I1 is light industry. So we do have some areas in the village where you see kind of mixed uses. Lighter industry might be your little machine shops, different places where it wouldn't be completely out of sorts.
That's still housing though, am I correct?
Short term.
Yep, so that actually...
Well, does it make any sense to...
Refer back.
The...let me just clarify, the Spirit Way location is light industry.
It is, okay.
Does it make any sense to amend the ordinance and take transitional facility and shelter facility out of I2 and just...
Let me just...
Put them in R3 and I1?
Let me just clarify, we can only take action on the shelter facility definition and location. The transitional facility would be a separate action.
Okay, you're right, yep. Thank you.
I guess what I'd, based upon the conversation, I'd probably recommend is you amend the ordinance to list it in R3 and I1. So you have the multifamily and the light industry and not listed in the heavy industry I2 district.
And then you bring back the transitional housing definition ordinance...
Correct.
Amendment later.
So you could put shelter facility down a notch, not have it in the same line as transitional facility, and then we could not...then we could amend what's proposed here to have the shelter facility only in R3 and I1? If we put it in, drop it down?
Right. It'd be its own classification as a conditional use in R3 and I1.
Alright.
If that's the direction the board would like to go.
Alright, I'll make that motion to amend then.
So the motion can...is to amend the motion to just...
We would give shelter...
R3 and I1.
My motion would be to amend the ordinance to have shelter facility be in its own category and then only be a conditional use in R3 and I1.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to put the shelter facility as its own line and only allow it as a conditional use in R3 and I1.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, does everybody understand that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
I'm not, I don't want...
Okay. One, no. Okay. This would be 10aa right before b here. Well, 10i, action on cosponsored organization plans to have altered seasons. Mr. Rex.
Well, our department has been working on pretty much everything times two. We had things planned out and everything has changed, obviously, with the pandemic. One of the things that I've been in discussion with our cosponsor groups, and we have representatives here tonight from the three that are before you in your agenda packet. We have representatives from Ashwabandon Youth Baseball, Ashwabandon Girl Softball Association, as well as the Ashwabandon Swim Club. And what they would like to do, or what they have done, is they have presented a written plan to us to try and get some sort of season going still for the remainder of the summer. Obviously, their regular seasons would have started, you know, quite a while ago. We...this is already tournament time for tournament teams and, you know, things have changed. Let's just put it that way, as everyone knows. Across the state, really from coast to coast, there's questions on what can one do and what can't one do. And literally from municipality to municipality, it is different. With the Badger Bounce Back Order being thrown out by the Supreme Court, really, it's up to each municipality to make their own decisions on what's allowable and what's not, and whether or not they want to take any CDC or local health department guidelines under consideration in making those decisions. And again, some people are using different guidelines. Some people are ignoring the guidelines and doing what they feel is best for their community. It's really all across the board. Obviously, what these three organizations are here for tonight is they'd like to try and have some kind of season. I will say that there are multiple communities within the Brown County area, City of Green Bay, Alloway, DePere, Lawrence, probably more, that are doing the same thing we are doing right now. They've asked their community youth organizations to come up with a plan, a safety plan for the kids, the staff, their volunteers, and the parents. And all of those aspects are typically in these plans. Couple different things. There's not only the village is involved in this in some form or fashion, but the school district is also. The school district, obviously, the pool's on school district property. Clipstein Ball Field or Ed Kirchmar Field at Clipstein Park is on school district property as well as Pioneer Diamonds Number One and Two are on school district property. The school district does not feel comfortable allowing use of those facilities on school district property until July 1st. That's when the Department of Public Instruction has said that's when people can get back on or in on school district property. So that being said, there's still plenty of village property that the season can continue on. Ashwaba May Park, the Ball Diamonds there, obviously Pioneer 3, 4, and 5, Smith Park, Gillis Park. There's ways to keep things going if that is the direction the village board would like to go. So as at this point, I believe for Ashwabandon Youth Baseball, Jason, well, you have 330 boys signed up for baseball. Still signed up right now. How many did...and you lost?
We lost five.
Lost five. I believe AGSA has 220 girls signed up right now. 212, they lost about 20. And then Swim Club? Forty to fifty, thirty currently. So I think what a lot of parents are doing to make a final decision is waiting to kind of see what happens tonight because these organizations have not sent the plan to the groups as a whole. They're waiting to see what the village board says, whether or not they get a blessing or the okay to proceed with their seasons going forward. So the plans themselves, you have the plans in your agenda packet. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at them. The plans were derived from multiple sources. If there was a national governing body, the...I guess I'll call it the Bounce Back Plan, even though that's not what it is. A lot of the rules were taken from there. There are national, and then there are state organizations that have the same thing going on. Many of the rules were taken from there as well as working with local organizations and just what other places across the country really are doing. I'll say, for instance, down in Waukesha this past weekend, as an example, they had a boys' baseball tournament with dozens of teams down in Waukesha, and they had very similar rules to what you see in the plans here. So we're trying to move forward. I'm trying to work with the organizations to progress the season or to make the plan anyway to present to you tonight and for you to be able to ask any questions to them. There's always a flip side. Obviously, we have our state health department as well as Brown County Health. They are obviously being cautious. That is their job as a health department to make sure that the spread of COVID stays low. And so right now officially, I believe they are recommending gatherings of 10 people or less. The other concern, if we were to go forward with this, and I know our attorney is aware of it, is is there any liability if we do progress forward with it? If someone were to get sick, what recourse do they have with the village for allowing this to happen? Now, we have, you know, some, I don't want to say it's a waiver, but it's more of a permission slip saying that people have received the Bounce Back Plan and that they are aware if they sign up for this sport or whatever sport they're involved in, that potentially something bad could happen, that they could catch it no matter how careful everybody is in the process. So that's the concerns with it. So what I'd like to do right now, hopefully everyone's had a chance to take a look at the three plans. As I said, and this is happening at all of the other local communities as well, where they're kind of a vetting, you know, should we allow it? Should we not allow it? And I believe Alloway Baseball has already allowed it. One of them, one of the local communities I just heard has allowed it. But someone like, I want to say, some of the outline communities are not allowing it. So again, all over the board, there's no, unfortunately, no true guideline of what's happening out there. I would say we have our three organizations here now. Rather than me continuing to speak, what questions does the board have based on any of the three plans? Or if you want to take them one by one, we can do that too. Whatever you feel is the best way to do it. They are here to answer questions that each of you may have about their process and how they would, if allowed to proceed, how they would keep everybody safe during the process.
I'll make a motion to open the floor for anyone who wishes to speak on this issue.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Floor is open. Okay, anybody have any questions for any of the coaches here?
Can we leave it open, leave the floor open and have some discussion? And maybe that'll just bring something out?
Maybe what I'll do too is I can pass this microphone around. Maybe there can be two organizations that are on each end of the table over there so they each have a microphone, and then I can give this microphone to one of you guys. That way you can answer directly because you're going to need to answer into the microphone. So maybe if I could have baseball over on that side of the table. Brooke, if you could maybe sit on the other side. And then Leah and Tim would get the other mic for Swim Club. Thank you, Allison. I think they're good right now.
I have a few things, so...
Okay, before we start, I do want to let everybody know. I told her that I would make everybody aware. Renee Jaden Smith, excuse me, Renee Jaden Rice, sent an email that she does not think that we should open youth sports. She thinks that because the CDC has not opened stuff up to more than 10, we should be following their guidelines. So I just want everybody to know that she did send that email, so... Okay, Mark, you have...
Yes, I have a few things. This is probably one of the most called in things that I've gotten in the last, for quite a while anyways. And I've talked to both some of the leadership of a couple of the organizations that are here. And I've read through the plans that we have here. And I'm...I want to see the kids get out and do something. And I was in a neighborhood last week, and that was the number one thing that they contacted me. And the parents came up to me and talked to me about getting their kids back on the field and doing things. I haven't heard anybody say to me that called me was against it, not one. The only thing is I think we should have some consistency between the organizations before we move forward with any plan. The biggest thing that I see in the two differences in AYB and AGSA is concession stand. I don't know if we want, I mean, a little later on the agenda, you're going to see that the blast is canceled. Our major fundraiser is the concessions there, and we don't know if people are going to work it, want to work it, and do some things like that and what the comfort is in doing it. So I'm not, sorry, in favor of the AGSA opening a concession stand because I think we should maintain some consistency, I guess, across our, you know, our cosponsored programs. I know that I have a sports facility that has volleyball and gymnastics in it, and we are closing our concessions down as well. Doing the same kind of things that you guys are doing in sanitizing. So I have some background into myself and personal experience, so it's not like... And we are opening June 1st, so I mean, in doing things. So I mean, it's a...I think it's good to get them out there a little bit with the precautions in place, keeping the kids' safety in mind and the people that are around them as well. So I mean, that's my two cents worth on it right now. I guess I'd like to see some consistency between the programs. And I don't know if you can answer that or not. You know, softball, for instance, and because baseball isn't doing it and swimming doesn't have a concession stand, so I just like a little feedback there.
Sure, I can speak to that. So we did debate that quite heavily. And our, one of our biggest concerns is the kids are outside. Village water isn't going to be turned on, at least selling beverages for the kids if, you know, some kids run out of water or whatnot. Selling items like that, that were all prepackaged. You know, like I said, we debated it and tried to come up with a plan that was safe with Plexiglas so that there is minimal back and forth between the customer as well as no money handling and selling all prepackaged. So it would just be candy, soda, water, Oreos, anything you can get in prepackaged. You know, nobody's going to be grilling. Nobody's going to be making hot dogs and wrapping them up. So we thought that with that minimal offering as well as the Plexiglas and no money being exchanged hands, they have to give exact change and kind of, you know, vending machine, if you will. You want a $2 Gatorade? So here's my $2. I'll drop it in the coffee can, and here's your Gatorade. With that minimal touching, that minimal exposure, that we could make it safe and still offer water and Gatorade specifically to the players if they run out or if they need it.
What's your thoughts, Jason?
Yeah, you know, for us, and by the way, I really respect where Brooke is coming from because from an organizational standpoint, not having a concession stand certainly is difficult for us, right? I mean, that is generally 90% of our income. So it is a tough one for us. Now, for us, when we looked at building the plan, what we really wanted to consider is how do we get kids on the field first? And we have saved up enough money where we can get through this year with umpires, uniforms we're going to scrap for the year. Like, it's going to be baseball at its basic level. Concessions to us right now was just such a big wild card that we didn't want to muddy the waters with it. Now, I totally understand, you know, where softball's coming from because certainly I would love to open ours up as well because that would really help us out. But we've already canceled our home baseball tournaments, which is generally our largest income. We're going to, what we would do in place is encourage kids to bring their own water. We actually don't want a lot of food down there. We want no seeds, no gum, things that can be, you know, spit out, things like that. We really don't want that. Even the food kind of wrappers and things like that for us having to pick up after just seemed like too much. Now, all that isn't to say that we wouldn't come back maybe in a month when things are changing every day, and I think we all recognize that, that all of a sudden, a week from now, the way that the world looks could change and things could be completely different. And maybe we come back at the end of June and say, hey, we're thinking about opening up concessions in mid-July, what do you think? But right now, today, as we sit here today, I don't see it. I don't think that that's really where we want to go for us. First and foremost, it's let's get the kids on the field and address some of the ancillary stuff later.
Anybody else have, on the board, have any suggestions or...
I don't have a problem with...go ahead, Mike.
I listened to one of the world-renowned infectious disease doctors last night who spent time in Africa, and this comment that she made floored me. She said Ebola is not nearly as dangerous as COVID-19. This is the tip of the iceberg. Ebola is not nearly as dangerous as COVID-19 is. How do we deal with it? That's the problem. How do we deal with it? You were right, it changes every day. And the amount of tracking that's going on is helter-skelter, so we really don't know what the process is, what's happening here and there and everywhere. One of the other things she said is anybody with high blood pressure is a target.
Well, my feeling is that along with both Mark and Mike said, you're right, we have to get the kids out. I just feel strongly about that. But I do fear doing that, we're going to have a second stage. And it's going to be, it's going to be probably worse than the first stage. But we don't know. No one knows. No one has a crystal ball. Firstly, I don't think this is going to be solved until a vaccine is developed, and that would probably be not until next year. But what do we do in the meantime is the question. So I think people, parents, parents know what this issue is. If they're willing to let their children participate and they sign the waiver... participate, and they sign the waiver, I don't have a problem with that. Now, having said that, if two months from now, it can be determined that opening this up, not just this, but opening up again, is causing a second wave, this may get shut down again. It may get shut down. And just so you're aware of that, that if that happens, I would be very strong in favor of shutting it all down. Hopefully, that won't happen. I'm afraid it will, but let's hope, let's hope it doesn't. So, I'm all in favor of, even if one wants to do concessions and the other doesn't, I don't have a problem with that. Make your own decision based on your particular organization. But I think we've all heard enough about it, and parents know the potential danger they're putting their children in, and if they're willing to take that chance, that's, to me, that's what parents are all about. So, I would be, I would support this all the way.
I am, I've been in contact with several of the local municipalities on what they're doing, and the majority of them, like Rex said, are opening their youth sports. I saw an article today that Little Shoot's opening their pool. So, people are starting to open things. I echo what Ken said, that I wouldn't have a problem that if we have another surge here, that, you know, everybody knows it's going to have to get shut down. But, you know, as long as the parents are okay with it, and, you know, they're sent notices that, you know, bring your own water, because, you know, if you think your child's going to drink two bottles, bring six, because you may drink six. But, you know, I don't have a problem with opening up. I think the local organizations have done a great job in their planning, and I think the kids need to get out.
I just have one question. Does the swimming program involve Ashwabhanan at all? What's the plans with that at all? Have you decided what that's going to?
That problem will be discussed under agenda items.
Okay. But, so, your program is strictly at our aquatic facility?
No, club is not the...
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I got just one question. I agree with all of you, is we got to get the kids back on the playgrounds. If a wave of this does happen again, I'm sure everybody in this room is educated enough to understand it's got to be shut down right away. Rex, you brought up the, what does this mean to the village, as far as what are our responsibilities? Are the, do the parents sign a waiver, like I remember, to, if the kids play, it has not become a liability of the village?
Facility is not held responsible.
Pardon?
The facility, if they catch it there, is not responsible for that. That's what...
They are, the parents.
Parents are.
The parents are responsible. That's the only thing, because we don't want to approve something that can come back and bounce off of us. So, if that's the case, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, currently, Gary, if this helps at all, we do, currently, if this helps at all, I think, Brooke, you guys do, too. We have parents provide their own insurance information on sign-up. But what we're also proposing, both of us are, is to have a waiver included, just to make a secondary call-out, to just make sure, because obviously, since they filled out the insurance form, this is different, right? So, we want to make sure we're adding in this secondary waiver to say, I acknowledge I'm having, letting my son play, my daughter play, knowing that COVID-19 is out here. So, we're adding a kind of a secondary, you know, form that we can use to make it a little more ironclad for us.
Okay, all right, that's...
Sorry, I wasn't sure. I didn't want to talk on your behalf.
Plans to have a waiver as well. Okay. Okay.
Well, you do, folks, do a great job. I mean, every year, you do a great job. Ashwabanan has a great program, so let's hope this works.
Well, we couldn't do it without you, and also, just to mention, we couldn't do this without Rex. His guidance over the last couple of weeks has been great, so we just really appreciate how much he's been there for us, because he's helped us really get into a direction that I think would make this more palpable for all of us.
All right, I'll move to, go back to open session if there's no other questions.
Second.
Motion and a second to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
The only thing, like I said, the only thing that I think we should have is some consistency before, between the programs. If you have a family that has a son and a daughter, and they can go buy stuff at one facility and they can't at the other, if the, I don't know, if the boys want to open theirs up, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to, I want to see the consistency between the programs.
We would, I mean, we would be willing to change ours to make it optional for us, maybe. Would that be helpful to say, like, we would have that option to open it? That way Brooke and softball can open theirs, if they feel more comfortable to do it sooner. We would just make it an option for us.
Fine.
Well, I don't have a problem with one doing it and one not, Mark. I really don't think we have to, they both have to make the same decision. I don't have a problem with one doing it and one not. That's just my feeling. As the gentleman said, give them the option if they want.
I don't have a problem giving the boys' baseball the option if they so choose to do it. And right now, they don't, and, you know, maybe they might in two weeks, right?
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan set forth by the cosponsored organizations in adding baseball to the option of opening concessions on prepackaged goods as well.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the youth sports with the plans they have, and the option for the boys' baseball to add concessions if so choose, prepackaged. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Changing times we have here. Okay, 10B, Resolution R. 5-3-20, authorizing the issuance and sale of $4.78 million general obligation promissory notes, Series 2020A. Greg.
We've got a list of bonding items that have been brought up in the past, and it's kind of, once a year, we go to bond and borrow money, so we can pay for some of these projects. There are three agenda items in a row, it's three different resolutions. So, I'm going to talk at a high level about each of those, kind of together, and then we can go through resolutions. Brad Beegut from RW Baird is available. He's listening in. If you have any questions, we can have him come in and address those. But overall, the process is the same as we always do. We go through, list our projects out. Some are taxable, some are non-taxable. They are not double tax exempt. They're only federal exempt bonds. And they're categorized based on their public use or private use types of things. We have three items, three categories of bonds this time around. The first one is for the Ashwabhanan River Trail Bridge, some engineering design work for that, where a project's about $500,000. And then Element Way Road construction across the street for $925,000. And the big one in that other grouping is the EAB tree removal. If you recall, it's been a few years where we've been talking about this. We knew somewhere down the road, we'd get to a point where we had to bond to take care of that issue, and we're at that point now. This money will be used over, really, a two-year period to address the EAB issue in the village and get those trees out. Our forestry department will work heavily with contracted work and get that done. Some of the other items and some of the bonding, Vander Peren Way reconstruction, we've got listed. The Alden Station, the Schneider National Site, you may not recall the last bonding we did last year. There's two parts to that. There's a public and a private purpose road in there, so you'll see that in here twice. There was just additional funds needed to complete that project. So, that's the first issue that we're going to talk about tonight, that the first Resolution R. 5-3-20. Overall, the bonding came in. The number on this one's a little bit different than in the schedule or in the agenda item, because those aren't priced out and finalized till the day of. So, they go out, RW Baird goes out today and prices and sells the bonds, and that's just the normal process. They're the most closest to our agenda time, and they get final rates. The rates came in very favorably overall. On this particular issue, it came in at 1.46%. And we're looking at almost record lows, similar to where we were last year. So, the market's been moving around. This is very favorable for us. The second issue that we're looking at is a taxable issue, and again, that's the Alden Station, public part of the road, and then we have an incentive that we've been working with Slindy across the way for their Phase II development, and that's a taxable general obligation note. That came in at 1.9%. Taxable is generally a little bit higher, obviously, because there's a tax element to that for the investors. The third piece is a refunding bond for the first incentive that we did last year, and we did a NAN back in September with the intention of refunding that bond at this time of the year. So, that's something that we had talked about last year, and that's in TID 5. And so, that one priced out, that's a taxable geo-refunding bond, and that came in at 2.87%. So, because it's a refunding bond, and because it's taxable, it has a little higher rate. But overall, Brad mentioned that it went actually fairly well, quickly, the sales, and the rates were outstanding for us. So, those are all the issues, those are all the projects. If you have any questions on that, and I would recommend that, if you have any questions specifically to the bonding process, or for Brad, we can call him into the meeting, unmute him, and have him answer those.
The only question I got, Greg, is on the, in their packet, it says 4.780, and on their, on this first one, and on the Baird sheet, it says 4.810.
Right. So, again, that happens from time to time. When that final pricing comes in, those numbers will be altered a little bit. It doesn't change our project cost. It really comes into, if there's any discounts on bonds or notes. So, it's just that final pricing kind of seals the deal.
So, which one is it?
It's the, it's the 4.810. And so, they sent in, Quarles and Brady sent in the final resolutions this afternoon to Patrick and I, and he's got those. So, if and when we approve this, you'll approve at the modified amount. We don't have those numbers until, like I said, the day of, and that's the normal process with bond issues.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 5-3-20 for 4.810000.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R. 5-3-20 for 4.810000.
You sure about that?
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. 10C, Resolution R. 5-4-20, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2.095 million taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2020B. Greg.
Move to approve Resolution R. 5-4-20, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,095,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 2020B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R. 5-4-20 for $2,095,000 promissory notes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10D, Resolution R. 5-5-20, authorizing the issuance and sale of $1.895 million taxable general obligation refunding bond, Series 2020C.
Make a motion to approve our Resolution R. 5-5-20 for $1,895,000.
Well, you are a big spender tonight. Wow.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R. 5-5-20 for $1.895 million taxable general obligation refunding bonds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10E, Action on Annual Renewal of a Conditional Use Home Occupation License Located at 2090 Marley. Aaron.
This is a annual renewal for the home at 2090 Marley Lane for a state-licensed childcare center. This is just an annual renewal. We've received no complaints or violations at the residence.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that conditional use home occupation license at 2090 Marley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10F, Action on Annual Renewal of a Conditional Use Home Occupation License Located at 1394 Bruce Lane. Aaron.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10G, Action on Resolution Number R. 5-7-20 regarding the initial resolution to vacate the Pilgrim Way Access Road located in the Village of Ashwabanan, Brown County, Wisconsin. Aaron.
This is the first of a multi-step process for a street vacation. This is the cul-de-sac on the north side of the former Mack Truck site, right adjacent to Pilgrim Way. So, you picture the intersection of Pilgrim Way and Holmgren Way, be the southeast corner. There's that little cul-de-sac that runs along and provides access to the former Mack Truck site. You see the map up there. The hatched area is the, basically, the street. The right-of-way consists of some of the area that's around the street and the street itself. Following extensive research by both the state, county, and Ashwabanan, it was determined that the property that houses the right-of-way is within the Village of Ashwabanan's jurisdiction. Vacating the street would accommodate the redevelopment of the property, which has been vacant for a number of years, as a new dealership for Bercham Automotive Group. Village staff has begun the process to review the site, public and private utilities, as well as, public notification will begin next week, should the initial resolution be passed.
It's about time. That'd be great.
Do we know if there's any contamination on the site or roadway?
On the right-of-way, we have not tested the road right-of-way. And this, I believe that goes back to another property where the applicant was claiming that the village never notified the applicant of the street right-of-way, of the street vacation. In this case, it is very clear, we actually will be hand-delivering, or certified mailing, a copy of the vacation request at the owner's, or at the property developer's request. So, it's very clear that this is a request of the property owner and developer.
Okay.
Okay. That's great.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Present it, where am I here?
You got it.
Resolution Number R. 5-7-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R. 5-7-20. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Just a quick question on that. Are they going to have, ingress and negress has always been a problem with that particular location. So, with a automobile dealership there, that would be less of an issue than, say, a Walmart or something like that. So, they don't anticipate a big deal with that?
No, that is not one of their concerns. They're looking at the visibility from both 172 and Pilgrim Way as being the primary selling point for the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. 10H, Action on Improving AE Comm to Create Cost-Fix Options for the Ashwabanan Marina Piers. Rex.
So, back in April, if you remember, when those, the wind from the north was blowing a lot of the water back into the Fox River, the mouth of the Fox River. A lot of places had flooding. We were no different here in Ashwabanan in many spots. The water was over some of the trails. Certainly, at the marina, the water was over the break wall at the marina. There's a lot of wave action. Coupled with the high water, record-high water that we already had, it's done some damage to those piers. Those piers are built on riprap. On top of the riprap, there's different layers of different-sized rocks that are made to fill in all the gaps. And then there's the fine layer of, you know, smaller rocks on top. And on top of all those different-sized rocks, the concrete was poured for the pier. That's how piers are made. So, what wound up happening is because of the high water and the waves crashing on it for extended periods of time, and the pier was built to withstand a 100-year flood, or a 100-year high-water mark, and we're probably at, like, the 150-year high-water mark, the way things are going these days. It has undermined a lot of that rock material underneath the concrete walkway. So, as you are walking, and you can see some of the pictures there in your packet, but as you're walking along the edge, out on each end of the bulb, I call it a bulb, because it's that circular spot at the very end of each pier, the north and the south pier. South is worse. You can see the stone kind of starting to spill out. And whenever you get a lot of wave action, there's more, the waves are hitting it, and then it's loosening more underneath, and it's spilling back out. Again, record-high waters is doing that. It's causing issues... It's causing issues all over Lake Michigan and the United States. Because that foundation underneath the concrete has started to wash out, the south pier has cracked. Literally, there is nothing supporting it anymore, or is not as much supporting it. So it's now shifted down at an angle into the water. You can see some of the pictures there. Not that one. Patrick, keep on going back a little bit. Going back. It's kind of hard to see there, but you can see where, yep, there's cracks in the main concrete area, major cracks, as well as the tile work in the center, which has since been pulled out, but that has sunk several inches down below because there's nothing supporting it anymore. That's going to continue to happen. It's already happening on the north pier as well. It's just that the north pier hasn't cracked and started to sink yet. What do we do? Well, there's a couple of different options that we're looking at. We called AE Comm. AE Comm has a consultant who used, there used to be STS consultants. They're the ones who worked on the piers with us originally. So there, what we'd like to do is we've got a contract from them, we'd like to work with them on getting some cost options to fix the piers. And they're not going to be cheap. They're not going to be cheap. It's probably going to involve pulling that riprap out and possibly repouring the end of the bulb, and whether or not you want to use the same type of system and hope that it doesn't happen again, or whether or not you actually pile-drive in metal sheeting so that it doesn't have the opportunity to wash out at the very end, where typically the waves hit. There's a couple of different cost options that they would like, or we would like them to do. That is explained in the contract. But obviously, to do that, we're going to need a contract with them and the money approved for that contract. We have called our insurance agent out there, met with him last week on site, and he was asking, well, how much is this going to cost? We can't do anything without a cost. So again, by approving AE Comm's work on costing, that will also help expedite what, you know, and when a decision's made, it's going to help out with the insurance process because the insurance company's waiting to find out what's all that's going to be running us, what kind of cost issues are there. When we were out there also, the last slide, and it looks like some of them are at an angle a little bit, but the walkway lights are also because of the high water, the high water's affecting the footings on the walkway lights. Hard to see because it's kind of at an angle here, but the lights are definitely leaning at an angle in towards the water. They're no longer straight. The high-water table has obviously affected the footings underneath. Our concern, yeah, there you go, thank you. Our concern with these is if they continue to lean, it's going to pull the wiring that's underneath the ground, it's going to be pulling the piping apart underneath the ground, and then we're going to have a short, and the lights will be useless at that point. So there's a couple of issues going on there with that high-water table. And we're looking to get approval for AE Comm to do their costing for us to find out what it will run to get fixed.
You have money to do it? Money in the budget?
I don't have the dollars. I mean, I could probably take it out of 6211. I don't know what areas it could be. TIP 3.
So we have money to do it from someplace?
Yes.
And this is just the initial assessment, right? It's not the actual cost, it's just to figure out the next best step.
Correct.
Yeah.
Move to approve the AE Comm contract as presented in this item.
Second.
To take a look at possible cost alternatives.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the AE Comm contract for $2,700 in item H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
10J, discussion and possible action on park rec and forestry facility and program status during COVID-19.
As I alluded to a little bit earlier in the meeting, we are still trying, still trying to figure out what we can and what we can't do, what's, the things that we can do, how do we keep them safe, what do we need to shut down. Mark mentioned a little bit earlier, we'll be talking about it at the blast, probably will not be happening this year in 2020. We're still looking at summer concerts, we're still looking at our food truck rallies. Obviously, those bring in people. We think we can still space them out for social distancing and have some kind of entertainment. That wouldn't really be fully following some of the local health department guidelines of 10 people or less, but you're seeing, you're seeing a lot of that happening in terms of what programs can and cannot happen that's out there. Literally every day, things are changing for us, and we're, it's a new experience every day, that's all I can say. We closed most of our facilities, or parts of our facilities that are now, and now we open them back up. Playgrounds are back open again. We have re-signed them, saying basically, use at your own risk, because we are not able to disinfect them. We have, we have 18 playgrounds, and we would literally need a crew of two or three, eight hours a day going around every playground to continue to disinfect them on a daily basis. That's just, that's just not, that's not reasonable to assume that that can happen. We're planning on disinfecting the bathrooms on a daily basis. That will be happening coming up, especially now with the youth organizations being given the green light to play. Bathrooms should be opened up probably next week, the permanent restrooms. We have not turned those on yet. The couple of porta-potties that we had out before this hit are now locked, but we are starting to bring porta-potties back in for some of the sites. For instance, at the Ashwabanon Sports Complex, we have multiple rental groups, ISA Baseball, for instance, is one of them. FC Green Bay is probably going to be using Ashwabanay. They are all coming up again with back-to-play plans for disinfecting and keeping spectators away and minimizing the chance for that type of thing. So you're going to see a little bit more activity in the parks coming up here in the next couple of weeks. And how we're gauging on what we can and can't do is staff has been in literally daily meetings that are offered through the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association, and we're kind of trying to find out what, well, we are finding out what all the other agencies are doing. And again, it's all over the board, but you're starting to see in the last week, a lot of places are starting to open up right now. A lot of decisions are being made, and we're no different. We put up some tennis nets last week, as well as pickleball nets. We had those down for about a month and a half, just because people weren't, weren't using social distancing when this first all went down. So now they're back up, again with signage. Hopefully, that signage is still there. Sometimes we have to go back and put it back up. So there's a lot of things happening there. Senior populations, we are, we're looking at starting some small programs of groups of 10 or less, different information seminars. We've been able to do some online programming, the Ashwaban, for our book club, and some different seminars put on by different organizations. We're able to do a lot of that online through Zoom meetings and GoTo meetings. So that has, I think, turned out well. We have a fair amount of people on our email list that get literally daily or every other day emails of what's happening out there regarding the senior population. We pass on a lot of information from ADRC. They, we partner with them on a lot of programming. So there's also been good programming options put on there through ADRC for our senior School district usage, we talked a little bit about school district usage, just as an FYI. We are trying to figure out our date camp, whether we can offer date camp. Now, date camp, were this not to happen, it was already sold out for the whole summer with 55 kids enrolled. It was going to be at Valley View School. That's where it's been for the last, you know, six years since we've had it, five or six years. Obviously, with COVID-19, the school district has a lot of things on their plate as well, including the ability to use the schools for any type of programming that we have. But that being said, it looks like we may be able to get in there starting July 1st. We have a meeting scheduled this coming Thursday with school district administration, and we're in the process of finalizing our, our date camp plan, just as the cosponsored organizations did, for cleaning, sanitizing, what can we do, what can't we do. Our drop-off and pickup procedures would be changing. So again, we're meeting with our cosponsored organizations on Thursday regarding that. On June 24th, I believe it is, we're meeting with the school district again. Again, they haven't given official permission to use the high school pool yet for swim club. They haven't given official permission to use at Kirchner Field or Pioneer Number One or Two. So at that time, our programming, including cosponsored programming, is not able to use that. They are waiting until almost the very end to give us the okay on that, or the not okay. So we won't know about that until June, late June is the meeting date for that. Here's a tough one that I'm going to ask the village board to give us some guidance on, and this is the reason Melody's here tonight. You know, she has been trying to figure out, you know, in the grand scheme of things, what aquatic activities can happen. So there is certainly a chance, talking with the school district, that we will be able to get back into the pool after July 1st. However, that's going to be definitely changed. Lessons will not be lessons as we know it. Typically, for the younger kids, we have an instructor, and the instructor works with all of the kids. Lessons these days for the younger kids will be done by one of their parents or a immediate guardian. The instructor will be on the deck, teaching the parents or showing the parents what they are to be doing with their children. That's for the lower-aged levels. For the upper levels, we'll have smaller-sized classes, and then spread the kids out six feet apart from one another, again, instructor being on the deck, and we'll be able to show them basically, from the deck, what needs to be done for drills and skills. So we'll be able to do, do lessons, we'll be able to do some lap swimming, similar to how the swim club will need to plan their stuff out. USA Swimming Guidelines, as well as state guidelines, there's information on there, and the state bounce-back plan, it's basically, one swimmer per lane. One swimmer per lane. So just think of, if there's only one swimmer per lane, how long is it going to take to get all these kids, you know, through their workouts, or through lap swimming, if you're training for triathlon still, or swim lessons? It's going to be an exponential challenge coming up in the next year for that pool, for the usage of that pool. Because now you've got the high school team, and the high school team won't be able to have their whole team swim at the same time. So, you know, there's going to be a crunch on pool space and who gets it and for what reason. So we're still working through all of that for the pool. But COVID-19 is killed with chlorine. If you have one part per million, that kills the bug that's in the water, that could be in the water, if it's in the water. So we're comfortable from that end. It's more of the social distancing, the kids sneezing on each other and things like that that we would worry about, not that COVID-19 could potentially be in the water, because that's what the chlorine is for, that takes care of it. The lake is our, is our challenge. The lake is filled with fresh water from the Green Bay Water System, so it's the same water that comes out of your tap. So the water's filled, there's a constant flow of water on one end, on the north end, and there's a stand pipe on the far south end. So water in, water out, and we have different diffusers buried throughout the lake that blow up air to keep the water moving. However, the water is not chlorinated. Again, it's a swimming lake. What we do is we use bioenzymes that kill bacteria, per se. I mean, that's, that's what's used, and staff put those in on a weekly basis, and that's what keeps the bacteria count down, just like you would see at any beach in the area or in Wisconsin. We are monitored by the DNR. The DNR is our governor in terms of the lake, that's who watches us. We still send in health department samples to the health department, just so we know what the bacteria levels are in the lake, to make sure that the chemicals we have are working properly. But it's not chlorinated. It's not chlorinated, and never has been, and it won't be. So then the question is, how does COVID-19 react in an open body of water? And we don't have an answer for that. There's nothing that says it will stay, but there's nothing that says it will go away. And so we have, we started to fill the lake, we put water in for one day, and then we said, you know what, we need to, we need to reel this back in a little bit and think about what some of our options are here, and what direction we want to go, and hoping that we had some magical scientific study come up that gave us direction, and we haven't. Obviously, and Mel can speak for that if she wants, just give me a holler if you want the microphone. But COVID-19 dissipates faster in the open air. COVID-19 will not last as long with the sun beating down on it. But what does that mean? Does that mean it'll last five minutes, 30 seconds, two hours, a day? We don't know. Some places are opening their beaches, there's other county beaches that are closing and are closed for the summer. The closest thing to what we have at Ashwabanay is in West Bend. They have a swimming lake, and they, they closed it. They closed it for the summer, for the same reason, is there's no scientific study of how this reacts in water. So at this point, we're still up in the air of what we're going to do or what we should do. And I wanted to pose that to you for any thoughts, advice, or direction.
Hey, that's why you get the big bucks.
In talking with some of the local communities, I think everybody's kind of waiting back to see what everybody else is going to do, because, you know, they don't want to open if we don't open, because everybody's going to be over there then, and if we open, then they'll open, because there won't be as many, and, yeah, so it is a dilemma.
The only thing that I-
It is a dilemma.
Rex, is that right now, the plans that we got from baseball and softball and soccer is only the parents, or only the kids on the field and everything, and only the immediate parents or family there. So they're going to be close to a 50, 50-person minimum, any game that they have.
Correct.
The pool is going to have, you know, usually pulls in 500,000 people. And that's where I, that's where I would-
Not quite that many, but what's happening, Mark, is, for the pools that are opening, and there's a lot of pools around Wisconsin that are, that are opening, that are owned by municipalities, and those pools are typically, and again, pools, chlorinated pools, they're going with the 25% capacity. So if their capacity was 200 people, then they're allowing 50 people in, and that's the cap. The problem is, and that's what we would do as well, if we go forward with this, but we, again, we don't know how this is going to react in the water. And to me, it's, you know, it's a, it's more of a safety issue than some of the other things, because you don't know, procedural-wise, what to do. That's, that's what I think the challenge is.
All the lakes in northern Wisconsin are open, and there's a lot of swimming going on this last weekend, and, I mean, that's the same issue right there. But there's not condensed version amount of people on a lake compared to what there is at our lake.
Correct.
That's where I would have more, personally, I would have more issues being of capacity than the water transmitting the disease. That's just-
Rex, I think with your point, Mark, it's going to be difficult to, with that number of people, to socially distance. I mean, the kids aren't going to do that. Mom and dad drop the kids off, which is great, they drop the kids off, and they're not going to socially distance, I don't think, anyway. That's the problem. Ah, boy.
Rex, you kind of said there was another pool within the area that is similar to the one that we have here in the village.
Uh, West Bend.
And they are not opening that.
Correct. And then Howard, Howard is waiting for their- And then Howard, Howard is waiting for, for their, to figure out what to do with the quarry based on what we do tonight. Outagamy County also has a swimming area and like a lake similar to ours and they are not opening either.
Doesn't that kind of answer our question then? And wait and see what the future can bring. How long, how long does it take you? Let's say they lift some, something tomorrow. How long does it take you to get that pool going?
It would take seven to 10 days before we could officially open it. It would take a week to fill and then a couple of days for the staff training.
So you were, you did do nothing to fill it or anything?
We, we put in enough water, we, it takes a full seven days if we let it run continually to fill it and we, we did like half of a day.
Okay.
So we got a little bit of water in the deep end right now and that's about it.
Because the way this is changing all the time and I'm not the expert on it, but you know, in another week from now, it may change, your mind might change, hey, we can open it. You know, I would say the way you're, you're talking and what you found out about other communities, let's keep it closed till we see what happens in another period of time.
I think I would agree with Gary. I think we should just wait and see and if things change for the better, I'm usually an optimist, but not in this case. I think, I don't think that's going to happen. I just think we should wait and see if things change good, well enough that we could open it, okay. But if they don't, keep it closed. That, that's just my feeling.
Mel, do you have any thoughts you want to?
I'm all for the waiting, I guess, but staff does become a issue because we're holding our staff up from the summer job. So they're all waiting to hear what happened to these kids that made their money.
These kids that work, use this summer money to pay for school and things like that, I'm, I'm holding them. And so that kind of tugs at my heart too. I, I don't want to let the thought of my summer go, but I also feel for the lifeguards and the concessionaires that work for us that maybe need to start looking elsewhere or not. I'm definitely good with holding off and maybe waiting a couple more weeks and you're right, maybe a study will come out or something, the numbers will drop or something like that, but I just, I'm concerned about my staff.
That's a great point, a great point. I, I don't think we're going to know much before July 1st. It's almost June 1st and it's not fair to those young people. I just think we should keep it closed. Close it for the summer. My feeling. What's a typical close day anyway? Middle of August, end of August?
Mid-August.
Mid-August. You know, it's going to cost, it's going to cost us some money, it's going to cost the village some money, not getting the revenue and, but other things are going to cost as well. We just have to bite the bullet, I think, in this case. My feeling.
I'm okay with closing.
I, I know where Melody is coming from on the staff because she's done an unbelievable job on keeping the staff that she has. She is fully, fully staffed for lifeguards and that's a tough, that's a tough thing to do. So.
Yeah, I worry, I mean, keeping lifeguards is hard and then if we're going to close this summer, what I get back next summer could definitely be a
Yep.
A hard thing, so.
Right.
But I'm, I'll take it on if that's the direction we got to go.
Yeah. I don't know. Do you need a motion on that, Rex? Or do you get the consensus?
Don't think you can.
I think take the motion officially.
I'll make a motion to close the pool.
It's informational only.
Well, it says that in, the, the action item on the sheet says discussion and possible action on the facility. At the back of the sheet, it says informational only, but.
Okay.
Okay, Gary, did you want to make?
I'll make a motion that we close the pool until further notice, until we find out more information on what the virus does to pools of our
The pool or the lake?
Lake.
Pardon?
The pool or the lake?
The lake, the lake. I'll change the pool to a lake then. Okay, Rex?
That, that works.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close the lake for the summer. I know Melody had said.
Well, I didn't understand that to be Gary's motion. It's not for the summer, it's
Till we get more information.
For more information about the virus.
Okay.
All right.
And how it works with water.
Okay.
Okay.
On that motion? Can Would you, let me ask you two of you, would you rather see us do that, and I, I don't disagree with Gary's, or would you rather see us make definitive decision tonight, open or close for the summer? Which would you prefer, given your, your employee, past potential employees, et cetera?
I think we kind of reached a point of no return here. I think if we cannot open by July 1st and, and do that with the information that would come out or come from wherever, then I think we've kind of, you know, my season is 10 weeks as it is. And so if we don't, if we're not able to open by July 1st, I don't see there being a point in opening. So.
Well, and I think too, for kids, you'd rather know you have to find a job now than hold out hope, you know? I worked at Eschewa Bay three summers, so you have a very limited time and if you need to find a, and there's summer help being cut and there's, I mean, I had to cut 20 of my own kids at where I work, so there's a point where even if all of a sudden we say July 1st, we want to open, we don't know if we'll have the staff to be able to.
Correct, yes.
And I wouldn't blame the kids for finding something else.
And I have, I have told them that I will be your reference for whatever you need. So that's, and I guess that's not an answer. I mean, my heart's pulled two different ways, so it's really hard for me, but.
When I think too, I'd struggle with concessions a little bit if we did open, you know? So then if we are going to open, is it just the lake and then, you know, we bring in that whole dilemma again?
Okay.
Would you be amenable to amending your motion to close it for the summer, Gary or not?
Well, I, I was going to just ask the question, you're going to get to a point which you already answered, to where you, you can't open it, it's not feasible to. So when you get to that point, you're going to close it anyway. So I guess it don't make a difference, Ken.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second to hold off till we get more information on the lake.
Motion's close the lake until further notice or until further information regarding COVID-19 is provided?
No, I thought Gary's motion was to
Further notice.
Further
Further information.
Further information.
Right, which I stated.
Further information. Everybody understands? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Kay, request to approve TIP development agreement for 2465 Marina Circle for parcel VA-1404. Tony?
Attached within the packet is the development agreement that has been agreed to with the developer, Marina Circle LLC for the office building located down at the end of Marina Circle by Manso Flats. It does contain the terms that were previously negotiated and agreed to by the parties, which involve a TIP pay-go incentive up to a cap of $700,000. And the developer is to complete or obtain a certificate of occupancy by the end of 2021.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the TIP development agreement for 2465 Marina Circle, parcel VA-1404. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10L, general fund financial report. Greg?
Normally this goes under consent, but I thought it'd be valuable just to, to briefly talk about where we're at. I know there's a lot of unknowns. We've been talking about different programs being cut, this and that, losing different things here and there. So overall, I wanted to just show you where we're at today and kind of where we're forecasting for the year. At this point in the game, we are losing a lot more revenue than we're gaining more expense, if you will. So, and that's very consistent in the state of Wisconsin specifically, probably Milwaukee, Madison, they're losing, they're incurring a little more costs, but most of the communities are really seeing losses of revenues more so than, than increases in cost. And so I've had two calls over the past month with finance directors across the state sponsored by the league. So we're talking about these things and very consistent message. The big one for most are room tax dollars. So to the point of second and third quarters, you're seeing about 20 to 30% of your room tax and then fourth quarter projecting somewhere around 50 to 60%. So the numbers you see here reflect that. We had a budget of 450,000 in room tax. On a normal year, probably it would have been comfortable more, you know, 500,000, especially since we had a January playoff game. Right now, we're looking at not getting to 200,000. So that's $250,000 lost revenue right there. The Packers keep promoting that they're having the season. That obviously could change. That's the key to any more loss or potentially some return of those dollars. Again, there's a lot of time from here until September to find that out. Other areas of, of lost revenue are charges for services, so park and rec, for example. A lot of those are offset by a loss in expense. So if they were to shut down the lake, yes, we lose revenue, but then we don't incur the cost. So a lot of Rex's programs are designed to be cost neutral, so there's some puts and takes within there as well. Interest income will take a hit. We actually had very strong first quarter and even into April, so that'll help.
In what?
In, in interest income. So that's a little bit delayed. So again, a lot of our investments out there are in other bonds, so think of what we just approved. We're buying through our investment portfolio, bonds from other areas. So those have a lag effect, if you will. So it's not an instant drop in, in interest rate, per se, but there's definitely going to be loss there. Fines and forfeitures is the other big piece, being shut down, not as much crime, not as many citations and traffic stops and things like that. So overall revenue is there, but also seeing less rescue calls. A lot of those are good things, but there's a revenue component to that that we lose. On the flip side, on the expenditure side, the big key is in, in the savings this year is in our healthcare and that we have been moving towards an HSA plan and we had a large migration of employees switch into the 2020 year from a PPO plan into an HSA plan. The HSA plan is cheaper to the village. However, when budget's done, open enrollment's still going on, we don't know that. So we can project what we want, but we don't know until people physically make that move. And that, that along with a few employees actually dropping a coverage, that had about a $250,000 savings to our budget. So without that, we, we would really be hurting much more than, than we are. Other areas, we've got attrition and public safety, we've had some turnover, building inspector left, so we've got a little bit of turnover, you know, attrition there. That's normal in normal years. So we've been able to absorb the blow, if you will, of the lost revenue to what I'm projecting really to be at a zero change in fund balances, which we budget. Obviously, I'm not going to say we're at budget because our expenses are a lot lower, our revenues are lower, but at the end, we always do a zero budget. So when we budget, we approve equal revenue, equal expenditures. And that's where I'm predicting right now to be there. Building inspection has actually been up, our construction has continued to be strong, so we've got some gains there. But there's just still a lot of unknowns. So we're riding out the year and as, as information comes, we go with it. So here's, you know, the lake, for example, that'll be an adjustment made this next week or two. And then act of change again and now we'll make the changes. So it's a constant moving target, if you will. And I will continue to bring to the board and update where we're at and certainly if there's any very critical news, then we'll, we'll address it. But overall, I think we're going to be okay this year. The, the concerns for finance directors across the state are, okay, what's going to happen to our shared revenues, transportation aid, those are the big ones that come from the state, and then tax revenue. Taxes, the village traditionally, traditionally fares well. So the bad economy of '08, '09, the village really did not see much impact on a tax revenue. I don't, this is different, but right now, we've, we're seeing some businesses here and there, but it's too hard to gauge where we'll be at. We don't collect till July. Our second installment in Eschewa, in Brown County is July 31st due. Other counties throughout the state have different due dates, some are March, some are April. So if you've heard in the news, certain counties or areas postponing tax collections, that's what they're referencing. They might've had a second installment due March 31st or April 30th and they pushed those back maybe to June or something like that. We in Brown County have about as late as you can possibly be and there's really no talk of pushing it back because you really can't. That would really disrupt the whole flow of tax collection going into the next year. So right now, there's not a lot of, there'll be some impacts, we've got border review, there's a lot of things coming up. But again, traditionally, the village fares pretty well in that, in that area. So the state budget obviously impacts our shared revenues. The, the talk is in an election year, and this comes from Kurt Witinski, who's on the league Wisconsin municipalities, they represent, they're kind of our lobbying group, if you will, to the, to the governor's office. They're thinking there's going to be no adjustment to this budget, not in an election year. They've, they've said neither side wants to touch that in an election year. The impact really will be probably more in 2022 because the next budget cycle is July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. So the decisions they make impact that year, but we start getting our shared revenues earlier in the year. So there's a little bit of unknown when that impact really will be, if there's a loss in shared revenue or in transportation aid. The governor stated he doesn't necessarily want to do that, but they haven't set their priorities yet either. They're, they're still dealing with federal aid and how they handle that and they've got all the groups within the state and how they want to address those needs. And they'll just be constant, again, another one of those constant information as it comes in, we'll make it available. But so I think where we might see is transportation aid. They, they ran some numbers, they said, just so you know, Big Brother's always watching, they have cameras on all the highways, they do traffic counts. Traffic was about 20% on the interstates in the months of April and, and beginning of May. As of about two weeks ago, it was up to about 50% and it was probably by now predicting to be almost back to normal. So that's not only less traffic on the road, but then the gas prices were significantly lower. So that will have an impact upwards of 5 to 10% of how much revenue they're making on gas tax. That goes in, that's part of our transportation aid. So you see how there's a trickle down impact and a potential for us. So I think what we're looking at is down the road, even next year, we might be okay, but it's going to be certainly a two to three year window where we're going to probably see some revenue losses down the road. But this year's budget, we look to be okay. Like I said, barring, the big thing for us at this point is going to be the Packer season. And if they play with no fans, then you're not going to have those hotels filling up in the fall. If they play with fans and things are more positive as we stay open, then I would assume people are going to go to the Packer game, but who knows, right? We don't know. But the projections here again are 50, about 60% for the fourth quarter. So it's not, not like I have built in your 100% room tax revenue for the rest of the year. It's 30% up to the end of September and then it's 60% for October, November, December. So hopefully we'll gain a little bit back there. So I just really wanted to provide you an update where we're at. These numbers are constantly moving. I have another call, I believe, in two weeks. We're going to do every three weeks with the league and just update and talk about what, what communities are doing and how they're handling things. So if you have any questions or thoughts or concerns, let me know. You can call me at any point if you have specific questions or if you have concerns for the village that you want me to bring up with other communities, we'd certainly do that because there's, it's a Zoom meeting and there's a chat line going. Sometimes people are asking questions while people are talking and there's a lot of good information shared there.
Well, I know we're going to struggle sometime, but something that comes to my mind constantly, the room tax goes to pay the bonds on the KI Center and Arrest Center, and I think some of it's going to go to pay for our new convention center. So are there monies set aside so that when that room tax income goes down, as it's obviously going to do, it has already, to pay those bonds off? Is there money available to do that?
Well, the good thing is, overall, I think room tax has been, you know, coming in a little more favorable than, than originally planned. And there is a stabilization fund for that. There is a fund, there's a couple of them, there's a good double stabilization fund to help in this process. But it's, it's an issue across the state. Brookfield just opened a brand new convention center and they're on the hook for a couple million dollars a year and, you know, that, they're, they're going to have to deal with that. We, yeah, we have shared now. And we, yeah, we have shared now. The numbers I'm giving are just Eschewabunan only. So multiply that with Green Bay, Eschewabunan are about the same, and then, you know, drops off significantly for the communities.
The first thing that's going to hit is the stabilization fund, which would protect the RESH Center and KI-1. The trickle down effect is KI-2. There has to be excess funds to go to that, which is backed by the city of Green Bay. In terms of the new expo, that payment doesn't come, that's part of the original bonding with capital interest in it. So the first payment on that, I don't think is until June of 2021.
What about the RESH?
The existing RESH, those payments before COVID hit, there was already enough funds in that collected to make the June 2020 payment. And then worst case scenario, if there was no NFL season or something like that, you'd have to dip into that stabilization fund to make the like December 20 payment. But ideally, you know, if things start opening up or things continue to trickle in, but like I said, we had already collected enough by, I think it was end of February, to cover that.
Okay. All right.
Keep in mind, that's a month lag in terms of where those funds are coming from. So February money is really January money.
Typically, that first payment of the year includes principal and interest, and the second one is a lot of times just interest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. 10M, review and action regarding quotes for a 2020 one-ton utility truck chassis. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everybody. What's before you tonight? This is from the Water and Sewer Utility, replacement of of the utility truck that handles all of the valve turning and maintenance on all of our water system impertinences. It's a one-ton truck chassis with a nappy body on the back. That's a utility box on the back. We had budgeted to replace both for this year, but in in having mechanics look over the utility body, we've decided that with some strategic painting, we'll be able to keep that truck body for a number of years further. So we just went out strictly for the truck chassis replacement. Had a budget of roughly $37,000 for that. Put out quotes, quote request to nine vendors. We had three contact us back saying they couldn't touch the state price, the state prices through E-WAL. But Broadway Automotive did submit a quote. The state price through E-WAL was $30,981, and the quote from Broadway Automotive was So both quotes meet specifications. There's no problem with either truck that has been submitted. The lowest responsible quote is through E-WAL. There's about a $300 difference to a local vendor. Having said that, the recommendation is to go with the lowest responsible quote. The village does have the right per our quotes and what's written up in our in our quotes and our specifications that we can accept or reject any any quotes that we we deem we wish to. And I know it's been a discussion topic in the past when the quotes have been really close, and that's that's where our discussion will be tonight in terms of the approval.
Has it been ordered yet?
No, it would be ordered once, once it's approved.
And that was, that's exactly what I, the point I was going to bring up. For less than $300, I would prefer by have it bought locally. Gives us a lot of tax money in a year's time.
We're we're always going to recommend to you the lowest one that is responsible. But so totally understand that in an incident like this, where you have a a small dollar window between a local vendor and and the state contract, it's perfectly fine.
Doug and I had a discussion about that today. I went in and asked him about that. It's only, it's $291 difference, and and Broadway is a great community partner. So.
Go for it, Martin.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid from Broadway Automotive for the 2024 F-350 chassis truck.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid for the 2021 ton utility truck chassis for $31,272.
Excuse me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. N, review and approval of resolution R-5-6-20, approving the Village of Eschewabunan review of the 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C-MAR pursuant to WDNR 208 Compliance Maintenance Resolution. Mr. Martin.
For those of you that have been here any number of years, this is the same thing we discuss every year since 2006, and I can't make it any more exciting, no matter which year I bring it up.
Move to approve.
That's what I love to hear. What it is, again, just to explain it, in some communities, their sewer utility is separate from their community. They run, they run on their own, and they, I think of it almost as the city of Green Bay and the Green Bay Water Utility. They're co-mingled somewhat, but they run their business separately. What the DNR wants on the sewer utility end of things is that the governing body is overseeing, reviewing, and approving the budgets, the operations of the sewer utilities. We have that here because the Water and Sewer Utility fall under the Village of Eschewabunan. So that's what we're, that's what we're approving here tonight.
All right, I'll move to approve resolution R-5-6-20.
Second.
What's your heart, Ken? Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve resolution R-5, R-5-6-20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10O, action on purchase of new financial and community development software. Greg.
So I'm coming here before the board with the proposal to purchase a new software for our finance and building inspection departments and even partially some of the clerk's office. Back in December, when I came before the board to present excess funds from the 2019 year and allocate those for a purpose, this was on that list, and the board approved at that time to allocate $100,000 for the purchase of such software. This went to finance personnel last week. They approved it unanimously. And so what I want to do is just go through what we're looking at doing. And I know I just gave you a financial update and everything going on. So the current system we have was purchased in 2005. It's been upgraded twice, has not been upgraded since 2012. And it is outdated, and it needs to be upgraded at some point. It's a financial system software. Our current systems, the way we operate within our departments is we have a what's called a vision, and that runs our general processes, AP, AR, cash, receipting, billing, the general ledger, reporting, things like that. We do not run payroll through it. We run a separate payroll system. And then we also have a tool called MuniCRM, which handles our inspection side of things. So that's scheduling inspections, going through all the inspection, permitting, those types of things, code enforcement. We brought in other areas, some trying to bring in more licensing, all different types of permitting. And the clerk's office uses a tool called License Manager to kind of fill in the gaps with other license needs. The new tool that we'd like to get to would do all of those. So it'd be one single tool to handle all that, and it would create a lot of efficiencies without, so right now, for example, if someone comes in to buy a permit, Patty has to go into MuniCRM, enter the customer information, set that all up, blah, 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 type all the information in, permit's done. Then she turns around and goes into Vision and types about half that information right back in, all the same information to do the billing side of it and and collect the cash. A new system would be input at once, hit submit, and it flows, processes flows through. You can build in hierarchy systems. So if I put something in, I can click submit, it automatically knows coming from Greg Onehalls, it goes to Allison. If it's someone else, if it's Eric Valman, it goes to Aaron Schute. You build in those automatic processes as well. And so in our current environment, we are paying with the tools we have, we're paying over $50,000 a year in annual maintenance. So over a four-year window, that's $209,000. Over a three-year period, that's $157,000. The new software I'm proposing to get, including the upgrade itself, over a three-year window is $161,000. It's almost pays for itself over three years, and after four years, we're actually saving money. We have a more efficient process. We're bringing three systems into one. It has a lot more online automated processes. I can also do the budget with this tool, so I don't have to then do everything through Excel and then manually load all that in. The annual maintenance is looking at around $20,000 a year versus at $52,000 a year. So it's a really much more efficient tool. The current system I have in the vision really is, it's full, it's got about 200 different modifications because it's not designed perfectly for government. And so they have to manually modify almost every step that we do from AP to billing. They have to do some kind of modifications to it just to work the way that it's supposed to for government. These new systems, the one I'm recommending is Civic Systems. They're headquartered out of Madison. They have over 200 Wisconsin clients. I called a bunch of resources, references. I had Aaron call references for the building inspection side, and I had Jeremy call references on the IT side. All of our reference checks were were great, outstanding. People use it for different purposes. Some use it for general ledger, some use it for, you know, the building side of things, some use it for both. Some also use payroll. We're not going to go with payroll today, but it is an option down the road. That would be actually quite a a task to try to convert every, all of that. Payroll in itself is a huge task. We just have a new payroll system over the last couple of years anyway, and at this point, we're not looking to do that. So overall, we brought in three other vendors. Tyler Technologies, great tool, just a lot more expensive. It's really designed for bigger communities. It's a bigger product. You're paying for a lot of stuff we wouldn't use. BSNA was another one, fairly decent product. I would have been fine on the general ledger, but the inspection side wasn't quite where we wanted it to be. So so it happens in perfectly anyway because the cost of the Civic Systems is 101,285. So it's $1,285 over that $100,000, which we could easily absorb into our existing budget to cover that difference. So I'm recommending that we purchase that Civic Systems, and we'll start implementing that this year, and hopefully by, the goal will be for the start of next year to have it up and running.
Greg, I watched you on the Finance Committee explain this. I think you convinced me just watching you fellows go through this. You you mentioned it on the budget, at budget time, that was brought up also on what you were looking at. So I would suggest we retire our antique system and I'll approve the purchase of the Civic software for $101,285.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Civic system for $101,285. I have to say that, you know, what I said to Greg before is anytime we can find efficiencies in, you know, that side of the building, we run with a pretty lean crew over there, and if they can, if we can save time and money over there, I think it's well worth it. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10P, action on field force members to attend Democratic National Convention.
Well, did we forget one?
No.
No? P?
2019 excess general fund dollars?
No. That was part of the other.
No, that's, that was the copy from from last year.
Oh.
Yeah, that was the copy from last year for, just for when we decided that we were going to put that money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it's part of the, what we just passed. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, chief, you finally get to speak at the meeting.
Good evening. Yeah. Just real quickly, I took this to the finance and personnel last week in requesting this be brought before you guys. Our mobile field force team, which is comprised of approximately six officers, joins with the Browning County Mobile Field Force Team as well, are requesting to go to the Democratic National Convention on August 15 through the 20th. This will be comprised of three officers going, working 12-hour days. The last day would be, the last day of the convention on the 20th. Lieutenant Murphy prepared a very detailed explanation of what would be taking place, the costs involved, the training involved. It would cost just over $13,000 for the officers to participate in this. Some of the questions that were raised by finance and personnel were, would we get the money back from the federal government? So I had Lieutenant Murphy reach out to Milwaukee PD and the organizers of that, and they have received a grant from the federal government, so that money is guaranteed to be reimbursed to us. And they hope to pay agencies within 30 to 60 days after receiving the request forms. And the other question was to the amount of overtime to cost to backfill this position, which was approximately $1,400. And in order to cover that, some of the things that I've done so far is we've conducted some on-shift training that saved approximately $2,800 in overtime. So the money that we saved there would cost the approximate, cover the approximate $1,400 to backfill. So in essence, I think that we've covered the concerns of the cost of this. We would like to be able to participate in this. I think it would be a great benefit not only to our officers, but to the village as well. As you may recall, in 2019, the officers were sent out to the Trump rally here at the RESH Center, and we're using that. We anticipate that the political parties may again visit the RESH Center, may be needed there. So we are hopeful that you will approve this, since it also requires an IGA, an intergovernment agreement. I thought it'd be best to bring this before you for approval on that agreement as well. So my recommendation is to approve the officers to go down to the Democratic National Convention for the mobile field force team.
I, I know that at the Finance and Personnel Committee, one of our new members there, Allison Brunette, made the comment that she thought that this would be a great opportunity for our officers. And I know that you had said that this was going to be crowd control, they'd be doing a lot of the crowd control. Well, we have Packer games here, which involves a lot of crowd control. So it can always be, it can always be used, so.
Make a motion that we approve the public safety to attend the, three members to attend the field force members to attend Democratic National Convention.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the three officers to go to the Democratic National Convention. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. 10Q, action on 2020, 2021 retail alcohol license renewals.
This is the first installment. You will have the second installment next month of retail alcohol license renewals. Nothing glaring, nothing new, pretty much standard quo. I would just recommend approval contingent upon all fees and outstanding indebtedness to the village is paid in full before they are granted or provided the renewal license come July 1.
So.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the retail alcohol license renewals contingent upon all fees and outstanding indebted indebtedness to the village. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10R, action on resolution number R-5-1-20, Eschewabunan Blast Celebration.
As I said before, I don't know, Allison, if you want to take this or who is thinking about doing it, but I mentioned it before that the committee has met on the blast, and we have, I think officially canceled it as of now. We had to try to get our bans rescheduled for next year, that sort of thing. We just didn't think that there was enough with the volunteers and everything else, and the financial possible loss to the committee would be way more than what we could gain on it, so virtually.
So what do you want to do with this resolution?
Nothing.
So you receive and place and file if you want. Otherwise, basically, no action needs to be taken on that, and then it'll be rescheduled for August 14 of 2021, correct, Rex? to be taken on that. And then it'll be rescheduled for August 14 of 2021, correct, Rex? 14? So pencil us in for 21.
It's a shame. That's always such a great, great event. But.
You want a motion to receive and place on file for now?
Yep.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to receive and place on file. Resolution R 5-1-20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, items for next agenda. If there are any, call the office. Close session, Patrick.
I need a motion to convene to close session.
I need, I'll make a motion, go to close session.
Second. Motion and a second to go into closed session. Voice vote, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Melchewski.
Yes.
President Cardowski.
Yes.
Closed session items during the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabon may convene in a closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds regarding the public stadium development of parcels VA 89-2, VA 89-7-1, and VA 89-7-2 related tax incremental district numbers three and five, for competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to the San Luis assessment litigation for parcel VA-99-5, in which it is or likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. We are in closed session.